Good evening. Welcome and thank you for joining us for our fourth and final virtual community conversation of this extraordinary school year. Our goal in hosting these town hall events has been to stay connected until we can once again gather safely. We know that day is quickly approaching and in many ways is already here. We hope you have enjoyed this opportunity to connect during this difficult year as much as we have. We are looking forward to continuing our conversations next school year. These have been some of the most well-attended community events in our history, and we want to keep the momentum going. A few notes before we begin. This meeting is available in both English and Spanish. If you would like to hear this conversation in Spanish, select Language Preference in the toolbar and then select Spanish. The meeting is being recorded and will be available on our website, www.mappleton.us.
Buenos dias. I click in Lance de la reunion de zoom. I get clicky in the in the bar de arramientos donde dice language preference. Selección es español. Una vez que seleccione español, todos los presentadores serán silenciados, silenciados excepto el intérprete. Gracias.
My name is Cindy Crisent and I was elected to the Board of Education in 2015 and I have the honor to serve as the president. I am a community member and have been for all of my life. I attended the Mapleton Public Schools and am a graduate. My daughter also attended these schools and graduated back in 2004. And recently, my grandson has been attending one of the preschool daycare programs right here at the global, the Global Campus, which is one of our newest facilities. And thanks to all of you and the bond proceeds, we were able to build that building. I've been a part of Mapleton Board previous to the election in 2015 as well. Back in 2004, when the school started to change its model and look for a new direction, moving towards a small school by design. I was very interested in that at the time and there was an opening on the board and I joined the board at that time as well. The work has been very rewarding for me and I enjoy it and really love the direction that our school is taking. Thank you again for joining us. I really appreciate you all being here. This evening, we plan to share an update on our continued response to the pandemic. And then welcome the opportunity to stop talking about COVID. It's been an incredible year in Mapleton and we have much to celebrate. If we know anything about the summer, it is that the days seem to fly by. We will be welcoming you back before you know it. You probably have a lot of questions about what school will look like in August. And we will answer your questions to the best of our knowledge. We will also share updates on the reopening of Monterey Community School. The grand opening of the Mapleton Arts Center, or the MAC as we call it, and the ongoing construction of the new Valley View.
Hello and welcome. My name is Tom Mo and I'm pleased to serve as Vice President of the Board of Education. I was elected to the Board in November of 2017 and am honored to serve this community. I was actually appointed to the Board prior to that to fill a vacancy. And it was about the time that we were going after the bond that Ms. Crisent mentioned. And it was thanks to our community and all of you who passed the bond that we're able to build all these great new facilities that you see around the district. So my background is in design and construction of schools. So it's been really an honor for me to be involved in all of our our new buildings and our remodels that we're doing. So I'm just thrilled that we could give you all these great safe and conducive to learning facilities that we have. This evening, it is also our pleasure to introduce the newest Board Member to the Board, Ms. Daisy Leachman.
Hi, my name is Daisy Leachman. I have been a member of the Mapleton community all of my life. Born and raised here in Thornton, attended Bertha Hyde Clayton York and graduated from Skyview. I also have a son that went to elementary school at Explore and he now is getting ready to start ninth grade at Mesa. So I am the newest Board Member here. I'm very excited to be here. I guess what kind of brought me here is I always volunteered at the elementary school, put in a lot of time there, enjoyed helping and you know, we're hitting high school and I was looking for an extended opportunity to give more back to the community and with a broader reach, touch more places I can help and things like that. So I'm very excited to be here, excited for the new journey and the new challenge.
Thank you, Daisy. We're glad to have you onboard. We're also joined tonight by Charlotte Johnchev, Superintendent of Mapleton Public Schools, and Dr. Damon Brown, our Deputy Superintendent of Organizational Systems and Community Engagement. Community conversations are a place for celebrating our community and encouraging the exchange of ideas and information from all district stakeholders. Thank you for helping to keep this a forum for healthy, helpful, and hopeful conversations. We invited our community to submit questions prior to tonight's conversation. To ensure that we can get to your questions, we will not answer questions submitted this evening as we are sharing. However, if you have a question about something you hear tonight or something you're curious about, please submit your question in the Q and A feature. Answers will be posted soon on the Mapleton Connects webpage. As a Board, we believe that our community engagement efforts are the best way to learn from, listen to, and involve you, our community, in the mission and our work. Our community conversations are a part of a bigger initiative we are calling Mapleton Connects. Mapleton Connects is about staying connected, building our network to support each other along the way, and strengthening our community by celebrating the contributions we all can make to ensure strong schools and a strong community. Although it is our hope to stop talking about COVID-19 and the pandemic, we hope to never stop learning and growing from this experience. This year, we were faced with exceptional personal and professional challenges. Within our Mapleton community, we have lost loved ones. We have missed out on special moments with friends and family members. The pandemic disrupted nearly every aspect of our lives and compelled us to embrace new ways of learning, leading, and living. But Mapleton is a special community. When others saw problems, we saw opportunities. Even during the most difficult times, service to our families and our desire to advance our core mission, guaranteed that all children can achieve their dreams, remain top of mind. Thanks to your partnership and the collective resilience of our community, we are primed for an incredible school year. For our fourth and final Promise of Mapleton video, we look at the way we do our work in Mapleton, starting with how we create caring communities in our school through the work of Integrated Services. Through Integrated Services, Mapleton partners with students and families to achieve academic goals and realize meaningful outcomes. From special services to health services to student supports, Integrated Services works to assure that all students feel welcome and supported in our schools. Despite masks and distance, Integrated Services continues to build and support caring communities in all schools and all classrooms. Please enjoy this look inside our caring communities.
Hi, I'm Jill Fuller. I am the Executive Director of Integrated Services here in Mapleton Public Schools. So Integrated Services in Mapleton Public Schools is really everything to do with wraparound supports for children. So if you think about the hierarchy of basic needs, we're that bottom layer to ensure that those supports and services and that readiness component is there so that children are in a place to be able to learn. We know that a feeling of safety and security is important for the brain to be ready to learn. And so we have empowered teachers with a program called Olveus Bully Prevention. And what Olveus is doing is empowering the adults to empower the children to look out for each other.
Hi, my name is Allison Hines. I'm a fifth grade teacher at Adventure Elementary School. And we have been implementing the Olveus bullying program for a couple of years now. Olveus has made a positive impact in our classroom in many different ways. One of the biggest things that I have noticed is the relationships between the kids. How they are starting to become more empathetic toward each other, wanting to help each other more, supporting each other even despite all of their differences and different beliefs and opinions and interests. It really has brought my class together as a community.
What I look forward the most is conquering with other people, learning more. This is my first year at this school, so I would learn more about them, conquer with them, try to get friends with them.
I think as adults, we don't necessarily recognize how much is cognitively happening when a student, particularly a second grader, is approaching a bullying situation. So giving them that really explicit vocabulary and those opportunities to practice so that it's less that they have to rely on to recall things when they encounter those situations makes it easier for them to approach those uncomfortable moments. And it empowers them to know that they have the tools and the social intelligence to do something about it.
So another large component of Integrated Services is the mental health that we provide to students in our schools. And when I talk about mental health, I'm also talking about that empowerment through the social emotional learning. Our high school environments have the majority of our school social workers and our elementary, middle school environments have our school psychologists.
It's really fun to like hear other people's opinions like about like a certain topic or hearing how they feel and being like, oh, I finally understand you now, being able to get closer to other people as well.
The feeling before entering a classroom could be nervousness, dreading the classroom. You don't want to be in the classroom at all. But then once you head out that classroom, it's just like you shared something or you heard things and you're just like, whoa, like I feel a lot better.
It's fascinating to see like, I think it's more encouraging and more like, it just like brings up my aura of just like seeing others spread positivity and like kind of just like speak about others.
I'm like, how is this going to work for high school students? Like, are they going to buy into this? How do they buy into it? But it turned out to be so much more than what I thought it was going to be.
Parents are your first huge influencers. Did you know that?
The class meetings are kind of the root and the core of all of it. And our kids want to be heard too. They need that time to open up. They need that time to build trust with teachers, relationships with teachers, with their friends, with people they didn't have friendships with.
Just the opportunity for students to hear each other's experiences and realize that they have a lot of common ground, more than they ever probably thought.
By the end of this lesson, this is what we're hoping to accomplish, okay?
You know, we're a learning organization and so that respect makes learning easier and more accessible for students when they can get along. And so the trainings that we received through the district were some of the most relevant and applicable trainings and engaging that I've ever been a part of.
Integrated Services has a huge role in ensuring Mapleton students achieve their dreams. We take our role very seriously and we do what it takes to ensure that students have access to the resources and materials and opportunities that they need to be successful.
And now I'd like to introduce our Superintendent, Charlotte Johnchev.
Thank you, Tom. Good evening, everyone, and thank you for joining us this evening. I'm so very proud to have the privilege to serve as the Superintendent of the School District. I am just wrapping up my 20th year in this role, so it's been quite a privilege to be able to serve this community in this space. As we move into our first topic this evening, which is our continued response to COVID-19, please take a look at the numbers on this slide. We've shared this data at every single community conversation and I could not be more thrilled about what these numbers are telling us about COVID in our community. Over the past nine months, the rates have steadily declined within the Mapleton School District boundaries in every single category. If you notice where we were in November and where we are today, it's a pretty thankful space that we're in right now. So thank you all for doing your part. From staff testing to staff to student testing to vaccination clinics to often daily work with our tri-county health epidemiologist, our partners, help to enhance our response to this pandemic. Our ability to do what we could as soon as we could was key to our successful school year and continues to be instrumental in helping our entire community find health and safety while getting back to a sense of normalcy. In summary, over the course of this school year, we quarantined 174 cohorts. This affected 4,565 students and 402 staff members. Keep in mind that these numbers, of course, these are quarantine instances, not individual cohorts or people, meaning that the same cohort and the same students or the same teacher could have been and were rolled to remote more than once and thus would be included in the count more than one time. We had nearly 250 cohorts this year. So we're grateful to know that not every cohort had to roll to remote, thanks in part to our many layers of protection. In August 2020, we became one of the very first metro area school districts to partner with COVID Check Colorado to introduce a pretty robust staff testing program. Staff were invited and encouraged to test for free at least once a week, every two weeks. So it's one time every two weeks. Although they could test as often as they wanted at one of several of the convenient locations. Having access to that reliable testing for our staff was an effective layer in helping us slow the spread of COVID-19 in our community. Those, we were able to identify those with the virus and allowing for care and isolation. We're pleased to share that this year, almost 100% of our employees took advantage of this opportunity to be tested at least once. Combined, COVID Check administered 6,602 COVID tests to Mapleton employees. Through this process, we were able to proactively identify 82 individuals with positive test results. COVID Check is still operating a handful of testing sites throughout the metro area and these tests continue to be offered at no charge to Mapleton employees. This past January, COVID Check Colorado worked very closely with our district nurses to introduce another important layer of protection, which was student testing. Student testing helped us to get a better sense of how COVID was circulating in our community and assisted in diagnosing asymptomatic individuals to decrease the spread of COVID to our schools and within our community. With increased access to tests, our students were also able to isolate and get back to school more quickly. Our nurses visited all Mapleton schools on a two-week rotation. Students were asked to perform the PCR saliva test, which was just spitting on a little tube, which was for many of them more comfortable and a safer way for the nurses to engage the students in that testing process. From preschoolers to high school, not everyone, not everything was fun and games when collecting vials of spit saliva from students. Our nurses recall getting inquisitive looks followed by, you want me to spit in here? However, after just a few rounds, it became more common for nurses to hear, miss, are we going to spit today? When they would arrive to our schools. It's almost unreal to think that we were still awaiting the arrival of the vaccine in January. At this time, student testing was the next best thing we could do to continue to do our part to slow the spread of COVID-19. I'm very proud to share that our nurses did approximately 4,700 tests on 885 consenting students. Combined, this was more than 294 hours worth of work for our district nurses on top of what their regular duties are. We have immense gratitude for the work of our nursing team and know we owe this school year to their dedication, their bravery, and the love of our community. Today, with the COVID vaccine, the COVID-19 vaccine readily available, our partners continue to help us do the next best thing by offering vaccination clinics in all corners of our district. In Phase One of the vaccine rollout, many of our frontline teammates, including our preschool staff, the nutrition staff, and front office staff, were able to receive their vaccine from Children's Hospital. COVID Check Colorado, along with our partners at North Suburban Medical Center, which is a health fund clinic, vaccinated more than 700 employees at a clinic in February, making Mapleton one of the very first school districts to have 100% of staff who desired to be vaccinated receive the vaccine.
Since then, we've partnered with Salud Family Health, Adams County, the Thornton Fire Department, and most recently, Nine Health and Safeway to utilize our buildings in service to our community, offering vaccines to those eligible and interested. Salud Family Health in Adams County hosted a clinic in April at the Skyview Campus, vaccinating more than 500 people. The Thornton Fire Department hosted two clinics at the Skyview Campus, one in April and one in May, vaccinating more than 200 Mapleton students, 16 and older, as well as an additional 1,000 community members. On Monday, June 7, we hosted a clinic in partnership with Nine Health, targeted toward those 12 years of age and older interested in the vaccine. We were able to vaccinate another 256 community members, mostly who were our students. To date, our partners have helped to vaccinate more than 2,650 students, family, and community members, bringing our community that much closer to the end of the pandemic. On Monday, June 28, Nine Health will be back at the Global Campus to provide the second dose of the Pfizer vaccine to those who received their first dose last week and offer a first or second dose for those that are interested. The vaccination clinic will be open from 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM. The clinic is offering the Pfizer vaccine and is open to anyone 12 and over. A registration link will be available soon, so please check Mapleton's website if you would like to schedule an appointment for the Pfizer vaccine. We anticipate hosting additional vaccination clinics as the outreach and advocacy of our partner organizations continues. Operating in partnership with and in service to our community is at the core of the Mapleton Way. It is that philosophy that continues to sharpen our focus on relationships and family-like learning environments. As communities, we're called to take the next step in ending the pandemic. We are grateful our partners and staff were ready to make it possible.
But COVID is not the only thing going on in Mapleton. Our 2021 graduation celebration was a beautiful and joyous end to the school year. Resilient, spirited, and successful, our graduates were not deterred by the extraordinary and often difficult challenges of these past two school years. On Saturday, May 15, 360 graduates were honored with an in-person ceremony at DeTiro Stadium. Ceremony was adapted to meet event requirements put forth by the CD-PHE, including event pods and capacity limits. Graduates were permitted to invite four guests to sit with them on the field. Additionally, more than 500 people tuned in to watch a live stream of the event, which was offered in both English and Spanish. The class of 2021 received a combined total of $7 million in scholarships, making it clear that no amount of social distancing could come between our seniors and their post-secondary dreams. Their determination will serve as an inspiration to all for years to come. The Mapleton Education Foundation focuses much of its work on student scholarships to ensure that every student has access to post-secondary opportunities. We are grateful and fortunate to offer Mapleton seniors exclusive access to more than $250,000 in scholarships through the MEF every year. This year, 122 seniors applied for the 40 available scholarships. The total amount distributed by the MEF was $260,000.
They could take the opportunity to thank Tom for serving on that Board and also participating in those scholarships. He always brings wonderful stories back from board meetings. The class of 2021 leaves us with much to celebrate. Three students, one from York, one from MEK, and one from Academy, received the prestigious Daniel's Fund Scholarship. Several students are headed to the Colorado School of Mines, including one Mapleton online senior who received a full ride. Many graduates will continue their studies in Colorado at UNC, CU Denver Boulder, CSU, DU, and Regis. Other graduates are headed around the country, including one headed to Vanderbilt. Some graduates are going into the chosen career through an apprenticeship or family business. We also celebrate our graduates who are committed to serving in the armed forces. To close out a year unlike any other, our graduates graciously embraced a ceremony unlike any other and shared that it was the differences, like sitting with their family, that made the ceremony a perfect end to a memorable year. Enrollment for the upcoming school year is ongoing and remains strong. Next year, we are offering in-person learning for all grades, preschool through 12. We are also offering distance learning through Mapleton Online K-12. Those interested in continuing online learning, we do have spots available at almost every school and every grade level, but seats are going fast.
Last time we met, we shared the exciting news about the expansion of our preschool program. We're seeing strong interest from our community, so if you're interested in free half-day preschool for your four-year-old, please apply soon. Much of a child's cognitive development takes place before he or she even enters kindergarten. Our preschool teachers and early childhood professionals build on what children already know, introducing and reinforcing new words in addition to already existing interests and capabilities. For 2021 and 2022, we will be offering free half-day preschool for all four-year-olds in Mapleton. The only criteria are that the child turns four on or before October 1st and lives within the Mapleton boundary. There will also be limited spots available for every affordable, for very affordable tuition-based full-day preschool. Since we cannot invite you into our preschool classrooms this year, we introduced a video series called A Peak at PK to give you a glimpse of how we do preschool. All peaks are on our website. We'd like to share two with you this evening.
Awesome. Thank you, Frankie, for being the teacher. We have come up. You can have a turn now.
We have come up, you can have a turn now.
Good job. Try apple, ready?
Apple!
Yeah! Good job! Let's do a hamburger again. Let's do hamburger. Hold that one minute. Let's eat that.
Burger! Three!
Three!
Thanks to the USDA and our Nutrition Services Team, we are offering free meal kits every Monday through August 2 to all children 18 years of age and under. The meal kits include seven days' worth of easy-to-prefer breakfast and lunch entrees. Meal kits are distributed from 8:00 to 10:00 a.m. outside of the Clayton Loop and the Global Primary Bus Loop. There are no requirements to receive a meal kit, and you do not have to show ID or proof of address. We strongly encourage all families to take advantage of this wonderful program. For a map of locations and more information, please visit our website. The USDA has already announced an extension of free meals through the 2021-22 school year. What this means for you: All Mapleton students will continue to receive free breakfast and lunch at all schools in Mapleton regardless of national school lunch program qualifications. Although all students will receive free breakfast and lunch next year, it is critically important for all families to complete the meal benefit application. Here's why. Whether you qualify or not, submitting your meal benefit application helps your child's school access millions of dollars in additional funds for materials and activities. If you do qualify, your family will also be eligible to receive other benefits, including discounted and low-cost internet, phone costs, and more. Beginning July 1, you may submit your application online. Your information is confidential and will only be used to assure free and reduced lunch eligibility. Check our website for more information.
We'd like to continue with our look ahead to the 2021-22 school year. Our school year starts early in August. Our staff will return on Wednesday, August 4, and students returning the following Wednesday, August 11. We are hopeful that aside from the integration of valuable and positive lessons we learned this year, we will see a return to business much closer to usual across the district. School calendars are online and include important dates such as back-to-school nights and parent-teacher conferences. Although things will continue to look a little different in the fall for back-to-school nights, we are currently planning to see you in person once again. From barbecues to popsicle parties, our schools are organizing outdoor events so that we can welcome you back before the first day of school. Unfortunately, as we start the school year, we will not be allowing visitors. Once school is underway, we'll monitor the COVID numbers in our community to reopen access when we can safely do so. We do have a school supply list for the upcoming school year, and we'll ask students to come back to school with their own supplies. We are also hosting our annual Wolverine Welcome Back event to assist families with getting backpacks and school supplies. I will share more information on that in just a moment. Last year, we paused school uniforms and dress codes. This year, we will be lifting the pause. However, please check your school's website for all dress code information moving forward. At this time, we will not be requiring masks for students under the age of 12 or for adults who have been fully vaccinated. We will continue to monitor the guidelines from CD-PHE and the CDC for any change in the guidance. Organizing our schools into cohorts this past year helped us with our successful return. This approach provided, proved successful in other ways as well. Several of our teachers and school leaders have discussed a modified cohort approach for next year, creating smaller class sizes and student groups. You will learn more about your school's approach from them directly. We've received additional questions about COVID that we'll share a little later. As I mentioned, we're happy to announce the return of the Wolverine Welcome Back event. Thanks to donations from our generous vendors and partners, the Mapleton Education Foundation will be able to provide at least 500 students with backpacks full of school supplies for free while also connecting families with important back-to-school resources, including nutrition services, transportation, health services, and more. This event is very well attended by our families and has become a back-to-school tradition for the district. This year, the event will take place on Friday, August 6, from 10:00 a.m. until noon at the Skyview Student Center. Please watch our website and your email for additional information. I have a feeling it will offer opportunities beyond your imagination.
Although we are seeing fewer earth movers rumbling in and out of Mapleton construction, out of Mapleton, construction is ongoing in parts of the district and continues to be a bright spot for our community. To date, approximately 85% of our capital improvement program is complete. In August, we will welcome families back to Monterey Community School. Monterey temporarily closed this year for an extensive and much-needed renovation. Monterey is now enrolling all grades K through 8, but seats are filling up fast in this beautiful, newly-designed building. When we reopen Monterey, our students will enjoy a new gym, remodeled cafeteria, open hallways, and so much more daylight. The new windows and open areas offer incredible natural light. Monterey will hardly feel like the same building. There are also many safety and security improvements that will ease the minds of families and staff, including secure entryways, line of sight from the main office, and designated pickup and drop-off areas. Monterey is a Spanish word which means "the King's Mountain." So mountains, and especially Colorado's 14ers, served as the inspiration for Monterey's interior design. The renovated building will feature images of mountains, as well as lots of blues, purples, and greens. The playground is perhaps my favorite addition to Monterey, a brand-new, fully-accessible playground that incorporates an imagination playground. We greet the kids at the front of the building. The Imagination Playground introduces an innovative playground system that transforms the playground into a play space that encourages learning, social development, movement, and above all, fun. The Imagination Playground contains a variety of loose parts, including cubes, bricks, cogs, curves, and cylinders, with holes and shapes that fit together in ways that allow for the continuation of a child's idea. This interactive play space will allow kids to build a new world every day. We're also excited to share that Mapleton has just been nominated to receive a sizable grant from Adams County Open Space that will allow us to add tennis courts, a walking path with an exercise circuit, as well as new playfield on the Monterey site off of Rainbow. Rainbow Park will be the nice addition to the school and our community. The Mapleton Arts Center, the MAC, is located on Broadway. Of course, this state-of-the-art facility will house spaces for band, orchestra, choir, dance, and drama. It also has dedicated spaces for storing props, costumes, uniforms, instruments, and displaying trophies. There will be a ticket booth, a gallery, a black box theater, and an amphitheater, and a 900-seat auditorium.
The MAC completes the construction on Broadway campus, previously home to the John Dewey Vikings. This site is rich in our Mapleton history. In an effort to honor those who founded our district, as well as those who have continued to enhance the opportunities of our students, the Board of Education will work with local artists to create and install the first in a series of bronze sculptures. We proudly acknowledge the words and sentiment of Sir Isaac Newton, knowing that, quote, "If fire we have seen further, it is by standing upon the shoulders of giants," unquote. As a board, we are very proud of what we've been able to contribute. At the same time, we know that we would have been unable to make that contribution if it were not for those who have preceded us. To fund this initial installation, the Mapleton Education Foundation will be working with us to allow individuals the opportunity to sponsor one of the 900 seats in the MAC. Stay tuned for more information about how you can leave your mark on the MAC. You probably know that the Valley View School temporarily closed in spring of 2019 and that the old building has been demolished. The design process for the new Valley View is now complete and construction has begun. The new school will be a pre-K8 project-based learning school. Students will learn by actively engaging in real-world and personally meaningful projects. Instructional spaces will not be assigned to individual teachers, but rather to individual purposes. For example, there are several immersion studios where students can work in spaces dedicated to culinary arts, music, robotics, science, art, and technology. There are also open labs between classrooms and a forum where completed projects can be displayed. We think the new one-story building with both sloping and flat roofs will be a great addition to this neighborhood. Enrollment begins in less than one year.
Over the last 10 years, most of Mapleton's buildings have been renovated or rebuilt. When we started on our capital construction master plan, nearly every facility was over 50 years old and many had exceeded their useful life. Now, most of our facilities are either new or newly renovated. As we wrap up the many projects made possible by the 2016 bond, we are now looking at what we are calling the Final Four. These are buildings that have received modest upgrades and improvements over the years, and we are exploring options when it comes to making these buildings safe and functional for generations to come. These buildings include Achieve Academy, formerly Bertha Hyde Elementary School, Meadow Community School, Preschool on Pose, originally Clayton Intermediate School, and York International School. We are interested in thoughts from you about other capital projects. Help us brainstorm. What other facilities would enhance the education available to Mapleton students? A career center, additional athletic spaces? Let us know your ideas.
Now it's time to look at the questions that have been submitted and hopefully provide a few answers to that. The first question that came in is, will parents be allowed inside our schools next year? And unfortunately, as Daisy had mentioned earlier, we will not be starting the school year allowing any visitors within the buildings. We will be monitoring, however, the number, the incident rates of COVID in our community, and if those remain low, then we'll be able to begin reopening those doors and inviting visitors back into the building. So to start, we're going to go slow to go fast, and we're going to just start with kids and with the staff inside the buildings, and then slowly hopefully open that up to families and community. The second question is, will Mapleton offer student COVID testing? So next year, we will no longer be providing any COVID testing here in the district. Our contract with COVID Check ends in June, so the end of June will be the last time we're providing that. Again, however, we'll be monitoring the incident rates through the Tri-County Health website and seeing if there's a need for us to expand those services again or provide that opportunity. So as of right now, the plan is in August that we will not resume student testing. The second, the third question is, will Mapleton require vaccinations for students and staff? At this point, we are not requiring vaccinations. We are, however, encouraging at least our staff to be vaccinated and those who are eligible to please consider the vaccinations. We will ask our employees to be on an honor system, and if they are not vaccinated, then we will ask that they respect the distancing protocols from before and wear masks, but we'll be monitoring that through the course of the year and again, the incident rates in our community. The next question is, will you continue to track positive cases? And is there a chance my child will be quarantined again? So we will continue to monitor the implementation again of the COVID across our county. We work very closely with COVID Check Colorado and Tri-County Health. So we'll stay very clear with Tri-County of what they're seeing across our county and specifically in our Mapleton boundary with regard to the incident rates. If those numbers go up, then we'll have to reinstitute some of the protocols we tried this year. We are not going to have a tracker on our website like we did this year because we won't be doing testing or requiring our staff to test as part of our system. There is a chance that your child would be quarantined if they themselves are personally exposed to COVID or if someone in your family gets COVID, then they may need to be quarantined. As a practice in the schools, we're still working with the CDC, the Center for Disease Control, and CD-PHE to understand what those guidelines will be for August. As of this moment, we aren't needing to quarantine people that are exposed if they've been vaccinated and if they haven't been around someone closely for more than 15 minutes. So hopefully those guidelines continue to be, to provide us that opportunity to stay in school. The last question is, if my child or someone in my house tests positive, do I need to tell my child school? We are indeed asking you to check in with us to let us know if someone in your home has COVID or if your child has been exposed to COVID. We will ask you to follow the guidelines set out by CDC and CD-PHE next year to protect our community from any additional exposure. So if that happens, please let us know. We'll put you in touch with any of our health providers to make sure that we're able to keep everyone safe. So those were the questions. If there are others this evening, please put them in our chat, and we'll try to get those to you as soon as possible. So again, we thank you for joining us this evening for our final community conversation of the school year. In the meantime, let's keep the conversation going. Mapleton is pleased to be partnering with the ANYTHING Libraries and with Adams County to collect your stories from the past year with a project that they're calling Sincerely: Stories of Adams County. The world as we knew it changed in March of 2020, and as we process that time and work toward it, and work toward a future together, we want to know about your experience. We're gathering stories from across the county so that we can better understand and document this really important point in our history. We want to learn more about one another along the way. Stories can take many shapes, which is why you can submit yours in a variety of formats. You can write it down, you can create a voice memo on your phone, you can draw a picture or take a photo, or even make a short video. We just ask that you end your submission with "sincerely" and your name by which you'd like to be identified. So if I were submitting a story, I would respond or end my story with "sincerely, Charlotte." ANYTHING will be gathering stories through July 31 to be shared with the public in the fall as part of an interactive online experience. To learn more about that project and to share your story, please visit Mapleton's website. Lastly, we're going to ask you to save the date. The Mapleton Education Foundation's annual gala is coming up on Friday, October 1. We're excited to be planning an in-person event again at the Weston in Westminster. This year, we're celebrating opportunities beyond our imagination. Tickets will be available soon. If you're interested in sponsoring this event or simply attending, please visit our website for additional information. The gala is the foundation's largest fundraising event of the year, and these funds go directly to our students through scholarships, our priority programs, teacher mini-grants, and other opportunity grants. That's it for this evening. Please stay safe, stay healthy, and have a great night.